Mr. Resnick.
Yeah.
Mr. Suicki.
Here.
Ms. Williams Galliano. And the last roll call, Ms. Williams Galliano.
Chairman.
We have corn.
Thank you very much. Would you please join me in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof communicated to the Hopewell Valley News, The Times, and the Trentonian on January 5, 2022. The meeting notice was also sent to Comcast Cable and Verizon FiOS. The Board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. The meeting is being videotaped for the purpose of board review, future reference, preparation of the minutes, and viewing on Comcast Channel 19, Verizon FiOS Channel 32, and the school district website, www.hvrsd.org. Members of the public who intend to participate in public comment, we ask that you sign in at the podium prior to speaking. This will assist us in our record keeping. I would like to start by requesting a motion that the Board approve the following minutes, the minutes from the reorganization meeting on January 3.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed or abstaining? The motion carries. We also need to approve the minutes of the Board meetings on the regular and closed meetings on January 24, 2022, as well as the minutes of the work session meeting on January 31, 2022. Requesting a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And we will turn to Sam, our student representative, for his report, please. Good evening, Sam.
Thank you. As I mentioned at last month's meeting, the main focus for the Student Council right now is going to be dictated towards our homecoming dance that we're having in the spring. And right now, we're still through the planning process and working with the administration, but we're planning on having that in either in April or in between the junior and senior prams. And our main focus of the homecoming dance is to kind of push it off as far as we can throughout the year, just to make sure that, hopefully, that the world is in a better place with all the COVID cases and that there are less restrictions, because especially with larger dances, we want to make sure that everybody's safe. And so we're hoping to have it towards the late spring or early summer. This is a main importance, especially for next year's Student Council, because we all decided that the funds that would be gathered from homecoming would be used toward next year's Student Council. And even though we have a majority of senior officers in the Student Council, we all thought it was wise to give next year's Student Council an opportunity to hopefully run operations as like a normal board, because it feels like this year, we've had a lot of restrictions, and we hope next year, they have a lot more flexibility. And again, we're in the loose early stages of planning, but we're working with the administration to set a date and to make sure that all the finances are correct. For more athletics, there are some big news about winter and spring athletics, as there is kind of turning a new leaf, as winter athletics are starting to wrap up with a lot of the sports having their merger tournaments right now. It's important, as we transition to spring athletics, to understand that it's still important for whether it's students, faculty, or parents to just keep checking the COVID restrictions and policies when it comes to attendance and spectating. As we all know, spring athletics contain both indoor and outdoor sports, but especially with more outdoor sports, I think everybody in a school is more happy to be attending more student athletic games. One of our new Student Council initiatives that we're starting is something called Random Max of Kindness. And you know, this is something that we're looking to be more of as a morale booster for the second half of the year, as this is going to be happening for the next couple of months. And our whole purpose of this is to encourage Random Max kindness, as it is in the title, and to promote good behavior among the students. And we're also working with clubs throughout the school to promote their prizes. For example, like we're working with robotics and we're working with the site club. And they're going to be able to show off their talents by giving out prizes to students to demonstrate good behavior. Similarly to the homecoming, as I've been mentioning in the past meetings, we're starting to have our dress code forming, and that's going to be coming up very soon. And this is something where the Student Council is working with the administration, and we're going to be having our first dress code forum in the history of our school. And then this is going to be a student-based initiative to promote to students to speak to each other about whether they have any issues or they just want to discuss the dress code in place. And we stress importance of this, because we want to promote civic virtue, where it's not just us that are governing, but the students themselves feel welcome to speak about issues they have with the school. Not generally issues, but stuff they just want to discuss and talk about. And this is something we're working with Ms. Riley, and we're really proud of, as it's an opportunity for students to collaborate with each other. And it's a good example of a student-led initiative of governing. And to end on a good note, we're having our annual job fair this week, and this is going to be occurring this Wednesday. And this is a great opportunity for a lot of students to get good job opportunities for the summer, and whether that's as a paid job or community service. And then this is also a great opportunity for local organizations to get workers for the summer. That's it.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. A lot there, a lot going on, and we appreciate hearing about all of it. Do any Board members have any questions for Mr. Neal? Sam, I would just ask, have you ever participated in that job fair?
Uh.
Or do you have friends that have?
Yeah, I went last year for a little bit, but it's a pretty great opportunity, because you know, it's great just to understand, especially for a lot of the underclassmen, just because a lot of them don't have any job experience, but just to generally ask questions. And also, I think it's better that when students get jobs, it's within the area and it's with local businesses. I think it's a great opportunity for the students.
Absolutely. And we're grateful to all those folks who participate in that as well from the community. So, thank you. We appreciate it, and thanks for your report.
Thank you so much.
I'm going to reserve any comments that I may have for during the meeting, so I do not have an official report tonight. So I will pass to Dr. Treese for her report.
Thank you. And I'm going to be deferring to Mr. Colavita to flip my slide deck. So thank you. I will keep my comments brief tonight, but I did want to address, I know the big elephant in the room, which is the Governor's announcement here recently about the lifting of the mask mandate on March 7. So if you go to the first slide. I wanted to also put back up our budget calendar. We have had to make some revisions to this calendar. In addition to the Governor's announcement about lifting the mask mandate, he has also shifted the budget timeline for us. We are still awaiting our state aid numbers. Mr. Colavita, feel free to jump in. But I've asked Mr. Colavita to change the slide deck to reflect, hopefully, what we hope the process will be. We're hoping that it's not delayed more than this. But if you would like to say a few words about that.
Yeah, we had planned on doing a budget work session for both the public and the Board on the 7th of March, which would have been after our scheduled receipt of state aid, which was supposed to happen on February 24. The Governor has pushed off his budget address to the 7th of March, which means we won't get, actually, the 8th of March, we won't get our state aid until the 10th. So having a retreat to discuss where we stand with the budget would seem premature to have it on the 7th, not knowing what our state aid numbers would be. So the shift is, we're going to have our retreat on the 14th of March with adoption on the 21st.
Okay, thank you. Next slide. So as you all are aware, the Governor made an announcement that he will be lifting the mandate of masking for the state, and leaving that to institutions or organizations like public schools, like preschools and daycares, to decide where they proceed from there. So just to start, and I know I said this in my weekly update to the community, and I've responded this to the folks that have been emailing me, and we do appreciate your emails and have been reading those as they've been coming in. The district has not made a final decision on where we are with this. Right now, we are taking your feedback in your emails. Please, please be encouraged to do so. I've seen in some of those emails, people expressing some of their friends and their neighbors' reluctance to email us, feeling that we are inundated or we're busy. We want your feedback. We look forward to your emails, and we want to feel we're the community, your feedback on this. We are collaborating with the local health departments, both here in Hopewell Township and also Montgomery Township, those people that have been supporting us through this, talking to our school physician, talking to other medical experts. There are a lot of medical experts right in this community that we've been leaning on, our local pediatricians, folks that have been treating your children, scientists who've been doing this research around COVID-19, both in the pharmaceutical field and beyond. And we've also been talking to our mental health care professionals here and also those connected to the district, and collaborating across districts with other school districts as we make this decision. We are also seeking, folks have been asking, have we been talking to our faculty, our leadership? Yes, we have been talking to our faculty and our leadership and pulling all of our bargaining units about their feelings toward, you know, a mask mandate or choice moving forward. Here are some other issues that we need to consider. As the Governor made an announcement on March 7 about lifting the mask mandate, no one has lifted the quarantine or isolation requirements on public schools. We've been told we're going to be receiving guidance, maybe within seven to 10 days of that announcement. We have heard nothing since. So as this one thing happens, the other things still remain in place, meaning if a child is a close contact and is not vaccinated, or if a child is positive or showing COVID-like symptoms, they still have to quarantine and isolate it based on the previous guidance. So in the past, you were not a close contact if you were in a classroom seated, everyone wearing a properly fitted mask three feet apart. Now that people may or may not be wearing masks in the classroom, that is no longer the case, right? So everyone in that classroom can potentially be a close contact. That can be more kids quarantining, more kids on remote learning, and we know that that has not been a good experience for a lot of our students and a lot of our parents. So some of the folks that may be celebrating a mass choice may not realize there's that other end of it, of maybe an increased number of times that a child may be flagged to go, or even a staff member may be flagged to go into quarantine, and it may affect the isolation period. We've also adopted the new guidance that says, with the new guidance, if you are positive, you isolate for five days. On that fifth day, if you've had a substantial reduction in your symptoms, or if you're asymptomatic and you never develop symptoms, you can return on the sixth day in collaboration with the nurse, right? Because this isn't for every case. Everyone doesn't enjoy the reduced symptoms or is able to come back and wear a mask on day six. If you're able to do that, then you can. So those individuals who are positive and are returning on day six will not have a choice on whether or not they can wear a mask or not. And students will still have to wear masks on the school buses, which I think I'm jumping ahead, but that's federally mandated. That has nothing to do with the Governor's lifting his order, nor is that something that I can manipulate at all, or the district can make a decision on. So students will still have to wear that on the school buses. Some students and some children are not eligible for the vaccine yet. There was some talk that that would be available here even in this week or next week. That has now been delayed, so we don't know where that stands. So not just our preschoolers here, and the couple of times that we've had outbreaks, and we've had them over this last surge, have been in preschool classrooms where preschoolers have a hard time wearing a mask all day, a well-fitted mask. And a lot of our classrooms are autistic classrooms, where the kids struggle with that. So those students have been, you know, having to go remote because of that. So those students cannot vaccinate yet. And some siblings at home that may be younger and can't vaccinate. Contact tracing rules are still in place, so the pressure that our nurses have been under trying to manage contact tracing in this past surge could be back again. And we have to just think all that through, because none of that guidance has changed. The Health Department and the Department are looking at it. Again, we'll see where that lands. And then finally, we have spring break approaching. We know that every time we have a holiday or a long weekend, we've had a spike every time. And that throws kids out into quarantine and remote learning again. So just, these are all things that we're weighing. And we're weighing the mental health of our students as well as their physical health, right? We are concerned. We don't want kids exposed to getting sick, if we can avoid it. But we know that the mental health issues of students, you know, the kids are tired. We're all tired of wearing these things. So that is something we're considering as well. We did have a plan to transition out of masks at some point, right? So we do need to have a transition out of that. But again, we have to decide, what does that look like in light of all the other things that come with this? And I already talked about the mask being still required on the school bus. Okay, so on February 22, we are having another webinar. I know folks are concerned that these things are scripted. They are not. We take your emails that you send us, and we give those questions to the panelists that we invite to give us the same information that we're hearing as a school district, so that you can hear as part of the community what goes into some of the decisions that we're making. We already have two pediatricians that have agreed to do this for us from Princeton-Nassau Pediatrics, Dr. Winger, our school physician, Dan DiStefano, our supervisor of counseling, has agreed to be part of our panel. We are going to have representation from the Health Department as well. And we're looking to reach out to maybe two other doctors that can join us, who are in the field and do research in this work. But the questions that you are sending us in those emails, we're going to use those to craft and to give to our panelists, so that they can give us, you know, what their advice is, and so we can all hear that together as we go into this decision.
And Ms. Pennelli as well.
And, oh, sorry. Thank you. And we do have Ms. Pennelli, our high school principal. She has been, you know, dealing with this contact tracing and, you know, kids going in remote learning at a much higher rate than all the other principals, because it's a bigger school, of course. So she'll be here as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
To answer some of the questions. Okay, so thank Dr. Plitzis for making my slide pretty for Valentine's Day, because you would have plain old black and white if it wasn't for Dr. Plitzis. So I appreciate. So, thank you. And with that, that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Dr. Treese. Do any Board members have any questions for Dr. Treese?
I did have just a clarifying question. Will folks be able to email questions that they would like to be considered for that 22nd?
Yes, I would like that. I've already been kind of culling the trends of those emails that have been coming in, because it is going to be an hour session. We have to respect our panelists. So I'm trying to get as many of those questions answered, you know, and then we're going to open up to Q and A also, but I don't want to run out of time. So if people have questions, please, we're asking that they email them.
Thank you.
And Dr. Treese, I apologize if you mentioned it, but if you do, I still think it bears repeating. We are also awaiting guidance from the Department of Education and the Department of Health that's due maybe within the next week or so?
Yes, that's what they're saying. So that's the guidance I'm looking for around this quarantining policy, this isolation policy, how they are thinking that's going to change, or guiding the district moving forward as we may go down the road of deciding what to do with our masking. So again, that was a seven-to-ten day window they gave us for that information. And as soon as I have that, I will share that with the community as well.
Yeah, we know that other districts have already come out with decisions, but we felt it was prudent to wait at least until that revised guidance came down. So we will wait and see. Okay. Thank you for your report. And with that, we will move to public comment. Members of the public are invited to address the Board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You are asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The Board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting, so that the matter is researched by the district administration. Public comment is now open, and again, we ask you to sign up at the podium when you approach.
Hi, everyone. Long time no see. Wait, I have to sign my name. Oh my God, I'm sorry. My name is Heather Mott. I live at Nine Larch-Moncourt. And I just wanted to thank you all, because I did not want to come here in the past, whenever, however long things have been going on. My son is immunocompromised, and it's been hard. And then the Hermits of Pennington got COVID, which was like so weird. So we got it. My son walked into the emergency room and lost all muscle control in his legs. So don't anybody tell me what they know in statistics, or only this many people died as far as kids. That's what I thought about in the emergency room. My fellow people that I, you know, live with in this township, it was my son, you know? And I'm sorry, I'm emotional, but... Who knows what hydrocephalus fluid on your brain and COVID coming together does? And I didn't know what I was looking at. And neither did the damn doctor, which scared me more. So that's why I'm here, people. For anybody that got up here, not you guys, I'm thanking you. Who said these comments, only two children died, go say that to those two families. Go say that to those two families. Only two children. That's enough! And as far as masks, I think you know where I'm going there. I mean, I'm wearing frigging two masks. I had to get Charlie on home instruction, because I am seeing on Facebook, we're in Colorado, we're in Aruba, we're... We don't do anything. My daughter's in Utah for a reason, and it's good. And I can't even visit her, you know? And we see her on Zoom, and that's okay. And I'm very, very appreciative of all that you do, Paulette especially, and Rosetta. I can't thank you enough from the bottom of my heart. And my kids are so appreciative, and no kid is suffering from a mask. They're better than every adult. So that's my opinion. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Emotional.
Thank you, Mrs. Mott. Anyone else for public comment? Clock problems.
Is it all right? Yeah.
I'm Harvey Lester of Hopewell Township. Here's the situation that I bring to your attention in the public interest. At its next regular meeting on Tuesday, February 22, the Township Committee is voting on an ordinance that takes future tax revenue earmarked for the schools and other bodies to keep it for themselves. How can they do that? The concept is called a payment in lieu of taxes, or PILOT. The ordinance uses a state law intended to give less desirable areas of the state the ability to attract development. In 2010, then-state controller Matthew Boxer wrote a report which exposed PILOTs as subject to misuse to enrich municipalities at the expense of the schools and other bodies. The facts are, one, a PILOT cancels the regular distribution of tax dollars. Why should you care? The schools are entitled to 58% of each tax dollar, and the township 14%. A PILOT gives the township 95% of the development's tax dollars. 5% goes to the county. The schools get nothing. Two, a PILOT gives a 30-year tax break. Why should you care? You are a tax-collecting body with the power to raise taxes. If a development pays less than its fair share of taxes, you will be forced to raise taxes higher on the rest of us. Number three, a PILOT is not required in affordable housing. Why should you care? We all support affordable housing, but the PILOT law has a flaw, which the township wants to exploit for its own benefit. The development in question is 2,535 new residences on Scotch Road. Previously, the township used PILOTs, but not as now. The township claims that they will give the schools the funds they need. That statement deserves scrutiny. First, the schools are entitled to tax revenue without relying on municipal goodwill. Second, promises of one township committee are not binding on later township committees and are completely meaningless. The proposed PILOT ordinance is scheduled for a second reading, public hearing, and vote on Tuesday, February 22. Previously, in 2018, the Township Committee gave a PILOT on 300 homes in the Woodmont Development and 379 homes in the Zeitz Development. From 679 new homes, we are now talking 3,214 new homes scheduled for development. If that's not a cause for concern, please let me know, so I can stop worrying on your behalf. Once the committee votes, what's done is done.
Thank you, Mr. Lester.
Members of the School Board, my name is John Edwards. Just for purposes of information, I have an undergraduate degree in history and economics from Princeton, a PhD in African economic history from Michigan State University, and I was mayor in 2002, just for your information. Mr. Harvey's present, Mr. Lester's presentation is reduced to this. This is the common distribution of all tax dollars. When you pay your money, you will notice, please, that the school district gets a substantial amount of money. Under the terms of the PILOT, if this ordinance is not passed, your school district will get $246 million over 30 years. That's the orange. Hopewell Township, if the PILOT is not passed, will get $59 million over 30 years. That's what this looks like. With the PILOT, if passed, this is the distribution that you will all see. County gets 5%. Hopewell Township gets the lion's share of $389 million over 30 years. The school district, you'll notice, gets nothing. You're not on this list. You get nothing. So that raises all sorts of questions. This is what it looks like after the PILOT. Is this required to meet our affordable housing obligations? No. Those are done. They're taken care of. We are in compliance. Is there some litigation that requires that Hopewell Township do this? The answer is no. Absolutely not. Can they pass this without involving the School Board or the Fire District, who get nothing? The answer is yes. They don't even need to consult with you, although I know they have. Don't all towns do this? The answer is no. Notably, West Windsor does not pass PILOTs, because they understand that this is morally and ethically reprehensible. Hopewell Township has made a promise to you in private conversations, that they will take care of you. I have no earthly idea- I have no earthly idea what that means. It may mean that they'll take care of you in year one, I don't know. But they are not required to take care of you in year two, three, four, five, six. And I promise you, after 10 years, they won't even remember who voted on this or that they had a promise to make. This was personally put, this was originally put together to serve underprivileged communities. And when this happens, of course, they get 95 or higher percent of their allocation directly from the state. In this case, the situation is completely different. There is a demographic survey that you are working with, with the Township, I appreciate that, but it doesn't change the nature of this. I simply point out to you that of those 2,500 homes, there are going to be kids with special needs, for example. Who's paying for that? You're going to have to raise taxes. So that from the perspective of people living in this town, their taxes are going to go way, way, way up as a consequence. And the only party making good here is the Township. Were there other PILOTS? I was mayor in 2002, there was one. But that was a senior 55 development.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. We appreciate it.
No market-rate homes and no kids.
Thank you.
So, my final comment.
No, thank you. I'm sorry, your time has expired, I'm sorry.
As the previous two speakers have just explained to the Board, there's going to be an important Hopewell Township Committee meeting on February 22nd regarding the PILOT. But you have scheduled a webinar for February 22nd on the mask mandate. I'm here to urge you to please reschedule that meeting because citizens want to be able to attend both meetings. Both are vitally important to this Township, to this community, and we just, one can't take precedent over the other. If you could possibly think about rescheduling that February 22nd webinar, I think many people will be very appreciative. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Edwards.
My name is Catherine Fulmer Hogan, and I live in Hopewell Township. I have drafted a rather lengthy statement, and I'll be dividing it between the two public comment sections. I realize that as fellow community members, we can have a difference of opinion about what is appropriate in this moment. We may have very varied responses to the question of what is best for our families, our community, and those most at risk. Having acknowledged that, to say that I was disappointed after the January 24th Board meeting is an understatement. I was shocked, then angry, then really sad when I heard a respected member of this community stand here at this podium and manipulate the words of one of the most iconic speeches in the history of this nation to suit an agenda that is not at all centered in equity. Words that were born out of hundreds of years of violence, oppression, hundreds of years of the destruction of black and brown bodies for profit and folly, hundreds of years of the denial of access and resources, hundreds of years of terror and threats. Take those words because you are angry in this moment, this global public health crisis, that you cannot advance your particular cause. I don't believe anyone walked into that meeting intending to cause harm, but it certainly was a byproduct. Now, I realize that there are new conversations since the 24th, that each of us is holding our breath for one reason or another until final determinations are made about March 7th, but none of that changes the sting that many in the community felt upon hearing the gross manipulation of those words. If folks believe that we are to be a school community that is just, equitable, inclusive, and celebrates diversity, then we don't turn the tools to further it into a weapon that brings about harm and then wield it with disrespect in the face of the individuals who've been appointed and elected to serve it. If I were in the hospital and it was determined that I had contacted a virus that is highly transmissible, I would be placed in isolation, not because I am black, not because I am a woman, not because I was raised with little means, or because we are a working-class family or who I voted for, but because they don't want what I am carrying to harm others. That is a public health issue, not an equity issue. Now, if we want to have a conversation about the quality of my care as a working-class black woman, there is the potential for us to examine an equity issue. Conflating the two is not only problematic, it undermines the actual work, and the actual work is crucial, especially in the midst of a crisis.
Thank you, Mrs. Hogan.
Kate Hamm, Pennington. On this evening of a holiday of care and love, I stand before you this evening to represent concerned parents, guardians, and community members. There's no one in this room who would disagree about the changes in our education system, specifically over the last two years. I've heard many times that our children have been so resilient. They've adapted to our ever-changing learning environments from learning fully remote from their homes, to hybrid schedules, to in-person learning, to quarantine learning, even home instruction. Everyone has applauded them for their resiliency. But have you thought about it? We didn't give them any other options. We, the adults, did not provide them with any alternatives. We told them to trudge through and plow ahead, all while their social, emotional, and mental health concerns snowballed. We teach children to read body language and facial expressions, only they've been robbed of that lesson for the last few years. We teach children to self-advocate and problem-solve with their peers, except this landscape of education has forced them to self-isolate. We teach children to say something when they see something, but what happens when no one has time to listen? You say the district hired a Rutgers behavioral health clinician to meet the needs of our students. That's one person to reach potentially 3,400 students. You might say each school has a counselor. Sure, but do you know the class of 2026, the current eighth-grade class, is about to see their third counselor in less than three years? It's hard to build a trusting relationship and address deep concerns with a revolving door. If you've spent any time around elementary children lately, you may have heard five words strung together. "We don't talk about Bruno." Shunned by his family for being different, Bruno goes into hiding. He was alienated and isolated. The same can be said for many of our children. They've been made to feel embarrassed and ashamed of their differences or struggles, resorting to hiding in pain in public. They've been made the subject of jokes and forced into isolation. During the last two years, our children have been subjected to humiliation and bullying. Our children have endured unkind comments. Our children have been segregated. Our children have been knocked down and told to get back up again. They have taken hit after hit after hit to their social, emotional, and mental health. They've been applauded for being resilient when, in reality, we told them to just keep going.
Thank you, Ms. Hamm. Oh. Something's wrong with the clock, I apologize.
By doing that, we allowed our children to internalize fear, anxiety, and worry. By telling them they have to just persevere, we've not allowed our children to deal with and process the feelings they possess. We collectively have to do better. It's nice to have media write-ups about our therapy dog program, but what good is it when our students aren't able to utilize?
Thank you, Ms. Hamm. Your time's expired.
It's not up. When students aren't able to utilize it, on Slide 12 of the reopening of schools plan updated January 2022, there's a list of supports. Again, looks great in print, but if not implemented, what good is it doing? So I ask you, Dr. Therese and the Board of Education, elected by the community, what is being done to support our children? I believe in our students, their academic, social, emotional well-being, physical safety, and mental health. The question is, do you?
Thank you, Ms. Hamm. Should we just not use it? Oh. Use a stopwatch, yeah. I guess, I don't know.
By now, we are well aware of the mental health crisis affecting our school-aged children. The World Health Organization, the Surgeon General, many other physicians and psychologists have cited this crisis. As the School Board, it is time to take responsibility for the role the schools played in this crisis. For two years now, with zero supporting evidence on the effectiveness of masking healthy children to mitigate viral transmission, our state and local Board of Health and Board of Education have mandated and enforced mask-wearing under the threat of punishment for those who did not comply. The sustained promotion of fear and panic from teachers, nurses, and administrators about masking up and social distancing as a way to keep the community safe has functioned effectively as psychological abuse. Psychological abuse takes place when the victim's thoughts, opinions, needs, friendships, and physical appearance are made to seem unimportant. Psychological abuse is characterized by a climate or pattern of behaviors occurring over time. Thus, sustained and repetitive are the crucial components of any definition of psychological abuse. Two years of mask-wearing in schools. Psychological abuse was most strongly associated with depression, general anxiety disorder, social anxiety disorder, attachment problems, and drug abuse. Methods of psychological abuse include propaganda, coercion, sensory deprivation, blindfolds, masks, gaslighting, and trivializing. Gaslighting is an insidious form of abuse. It makes victims question the very instincts that they have counted on their whole lives, making them unsure of anything. For over two years, we have been terrorized and gaslit by our government, media, and public health institutions, despite the readily available scientific data showing the most vulnerable population is not our school-aged children. Trivializing is another way of gaslighting. It involves making the victim believe his or her thoughts or needs aren't important, such as, "Kids are so resilient. Just keep the mask on a little longer so that your grandmother stays safe." Studies on behavior modification, psychological abuse, and learned helplessness served as the basis for developing CIA interrogation manuals. A simple internet search of Guantanamo Bay images will show detainees masked as a form of sensory deprivation and torture. It is time to end these anti-scientific behavior modification techniques on our children in our taxpayer-funded public schools. For those that need support, please contact us at hvvc@protonmail.com.
Thank you, Mr. Branum.
Jennifer DiDonato, Hopewell Township. I want to thank you, Debbie, for talking with me last month. I truly appreciate it and your time. Rosetta, also, for meeting with my husband and I. It really, it means a lot to me to know that you guys really care. I know that you do, and we're trying really hard to work towards a reasonable solution. Sadly, I don't think that we've come to any sort of a reasonable solution at this point, which is why I'm here again tonight. Regarding quarantining, my kids are fully vaccinated and boosted. They've never been contact-traced. However, if they had been contact-traced, I would have opted to keep them home, knowing that a vaccinated individual can spread COVID just as easily as an unvaccinated individual. I don't see how it's fair to require an unvaccinated student to stay home for five days when the vaccinated student is allowed to stay and potentially spread COVID to their teachers and peers. Regarding testing, I understand that teachers who are unvaccinated must test each week, going to a specific location and likely seeing plenty of their peers as they line up to test. This exposes their medical privacy. Not only does it expose the individual's privacy, but it does not ensure the safety of others. I understand that no vaccinated teacher is required to test, yet they can still come to school and spread COVID to their students and other staff members. This clearly isn't fair or safe practice. Continuing with testing, I understand that the unvaccinated students are required to test in order to attend a senior class trip. The vaccinated students are not required to test and can therefore spread COVID to anyone attending the trip, including those healthy, negative-tested students. This is an unsafe and unhealthy practice. My suggestion is, and my recommendations are, to eliminate your divisive and quarantining policies. They're causing segregation and contempt. They're exposing otherwise private medical information for everyone to see, and I suggest that they're either eliminated or at least revised to include the same for all. In addition, I do support mask choice moving forward. In the spirit of Valentine's Day, I'll leave you with a quote about love. "If all of your so-called friends who let you sit in the comfort of your bad habits don't love you as much, they don't love you as much as the people who dare to challenge you to do better." So today, I'm challenging all of you to do better, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. DiDonato. Anyone else for public comment?
Can I pull my mask down?
Yes, yes.
Thanks. Hey, Deb.
Hey, Alex. Don't worry. My name is Dan Hanley. I currently live on Scotch Road in Pennington, New Jersey. I'm an active member who does participate on a couple of boards in town. I have three children in the local school districts, Bear Tavern, Timberland, and Central High School. I'm here to ask if you please consider voting in favor of removing at-mask for our children. I did provide an email earlier today with some supporting data, which does support the removal, but would be too long to read. It is titled, "Is a Mask that Covers the Mouth? Nose Free from Undesirable Side Effects in Everyday Use and Free of Potential Hazards?" I just only have one question. What organization does the Board adhere to in making the mask vote? Some of that was kind of alluded today on the screen, but is it the New Jersey Board of Education, the New Jersey Board of Health, the CDC, or the New Jersey Governor? I don't think any of, I don't think you'll probably answer that, but it just seems like there's a lot of confusion about where the guidelines come from. You had Governor on this weekend, I think it was on MSNBC, saying, you know, the case is everything's getting better in New Jersey, but then you had the CDC saying something else. Just hopefully, guys, everyone makes the right decision and kind of just looks at all the facts. That's all. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Hanley.
Thanks, Deb.
Anyone else?
I just want to thank everybody for all of your comments. Again, we are weighing all of that. When the mandate, the Governor mandated that masks were required in public schools, that decision was made, and that was the end of the discussion. This decision will lie in the hand of this Board and the leadership team. So, you know, that's something that we're going to have to work through. All of your comments and all of your feedback and everything you're sending us are things we're considering. And we will look into moving the webinar, because as you were making your comment about that being on the same night, we'll see if we can reschedule that. But we want to, of course, get that in before we have to make a decision on the 7th on where we're going, because I'd like to communicate to the community well before we're on the 7th, so we know where we are on that.
And with that, public comment is now closed. We will move, I will ask if there are any items of old business to address. Seeing none, we will move to the consent agenda. Like to request a motion... Like to request a motion that the board approve consent agenda items that have been marked with the asterisk. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? I should have said, any further discussion on any of the items on consent before we do that. Seeing none, we will move forward. I will ask Mr. Herbert for a report on finance committee, please.
Okay, thanks. Excuse me. Finance Committee met last week and discussed a number of items, first of which was the turf fields. The fields are now ten years, or field, although it has many uses. It's now ten years old. It has a life expectancy of about eight to 12 years, depending on use, and ours gets a lot of use, used for many different things. So, it was recently tested to measure the softness, if you will, of falling on it essentially, and it's very close to the maximum level that's allowed for turf fields. So, there are things that we can do about that, and we're going to do that a few times this spring, this fall, and then next spring to kind of decompact the rubber pellets that are in there. But the bottom line is, you can't do that forever, and very, somewhere fairly soon, we're going to need to replace the turf field. So, we're looking at, Mr. Becker gave a presentation, and he was looking at different technologies. There's a few different in the running. There's one that's more preferred than others based on some of the investigation that he's done. And we just need to be thinking about this now, because a turf field is a little different from other capital projects. We have to actually include it in our budget when we pass the budget this year if we're going to replace it by next year. That's in the end, you know, summer of '23. The other thing we talked about, a couple of other things. One was the, we just did our normal quarterly review of expenditures, and it showed us to be in pretty good shape versus where we had planned to be in terms of having money going into next year and potentially for the capital reserve. And then Mr. Quinn did a facilities update. Essentially, they're just being slammed with boiler and heater issues, trying to hold things together. They've really, we've got some amazing professionals there going above and beyond, trying to keep us up and running until we can get the parts and things in to fix everything properly. And that's all I've got.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Herbert?
I have one. It's the turf field, is that included in the capital project list that we've been seeing from? It's already in there. Okay, so it wouldn't be an addition.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Herbert.
Yeah, I have the same exact question.
Oh, sorry.
We're good.
You caught it, and I didn't. Thank you. Personnel Committee, Ms. Grillo.
Sure. So Personnel Committee met tonight, just before the board meeting. So we have a couple, oh, wait, I need a motion to move the items on the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Okay. So as I was saying, we met just before this meeting. A couple of approvals for you guys this evening. First is, we have a number of long-term substitutes on there for your approval, and the spring coaches. It's a pretty long list, but we'll be voting on that tonight. And then we also have a number of retirements. We have five retirements that we would like to acknowledge tonight. So we have first, Barb Bouguet, who's a social studies teacher at Timberland. She has been with the district for 32 years. She will be retiring in July. Candace Gore, teacher of wellness at Timberland, also retiring in July, and she has been with the district for 21 years. Jackie Stirkley at Hopewell Elementary School, she has been with the district for 20 years. Marcy Josephson, speech and language specialist at Hopewell L., she's been with the district for 19 years. And Victoria Obst, elementary school teacher at Hopewell and Tollgate, has been with the district for 15 years.
Can I have a roll call vote?
Ms. Grillo.
Yes.
Mr. Herbert?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Resnick?
Yes.
Mr. Sewicki?
Yes.
Ms. Williams Galliano?
Yes.
Ms. Driver?
Yes.
Ms. Lindthorst?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Grillo. Education Program Committee, Ms. Driver.
So the Education Program Committee met last Thursday on the 10th. We had two outstanding presentations. One from Mr. Umstead, the supervisor of visual and performing arts. He brought a few things to our attention in terms of some inequities for music, instrumental music lessons amongst, I believe it was Bear Tavern and Stony Brook Elementary. He had some really great proposals on how we can make that, rectify those issues. The second presentation we had was from Ms. Jean Freddie concerning a schedule change for Timberland next year, and some really awesome classes and courses that will be offered, hopefully, beginning in the fall. All good things. They were very well thought out, and I'm super excited to see what happens.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Driver? All right, seeing none, we will move to Community Relations.
We have an agenda, we have a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
A new course approval.
That's right, new course. New course approval, roll call vote. Like to request a motion to, that the board approve the attached proposal for new courses at Timberland Middle School. The approval items are the sixth grade literacy and seventh grade media literacy course, the eighth grade capstone course, and the learning skills curriculum.
Move.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Grillo?
Yes.
Mr. Herbert?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Resnick?
Yes.
Mr. Sewicki?
Yes.
Ms. Williams Galliano?
Yes.
Ms. Driver?
Yes.
Ms. Genovacy?
Yes.
Ms. Lindthorst?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Community Relations, Mr. Mason.
Hey, we, we met last Thursday. We had Amy Rockenstein and Amberine Ali come from Mercer Me. That actually started back a couple of months ago. Amy Rockenstein, like, was watching some of our meetings, and we were discussing how we would like to, how important it is to get information out, so she sent an email. So Dr. Therese thought it would be good to have her come in, go over some stuff, see how we can get stuff out more efficiently, effectively. And then she also had Amberine Ali come, who is the new, she's working at Mercer Me now, and she's going to be covering the school board. So it was a really good meeting. We went through, I think it'll be good going forward, it'll be more of a direct line of communication. We also had Ms. Claps come from Central High School, who's awesome, who runs the students, so we're going, looking to get student involvement in, with Mercer Me, get some articles out there, and I think it'll be really good going forward. We also discussed, obviously, the masking. Of course, we're going to, right now, that's on everyone's mind. I'm not going to get into what we discussed for obvious reasons. The only thing I will say, these are not, we're, we're open-minded, we're trying to do the right thing, we're having these discussions to do what's best. This isn't something that, this isn't just talk, when Dr. Therese says, "We're weighing everything," and decisions haven't been made, they haven't, and we're, we're looking to do what's best for, for the community. So, and when, when we can discuss it, and we can put it out there, we certainly will, and Dr. Therese certainly will.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. Any questions for John? All right. SCL Committee, Ms. Williams Galliano.
Yes, a very brief update, because we will, the district committee will be meeting, or the board committee will be meeting this Thursday. But I do want to share that the SCL Committee has been supporting and sharing with you work being done across the district with over 30 different staff members, all with the interest of really incorporating SCL in their classroom, and also in terms of better adopting and managing their own well-being and being a model for their students. So the, there are six, I think we have six sessions coming up. Our first, or next one is actually tomorrow, if I'm not mistaken, and Beth Hoffman is leading that, in addition to the other administrative staff that supports the program. But it is being primarily run with a guest, instructor Dr. Bussar, and we're actually reading a book along with the training sessions. So it's really, I just can't say enough how reassuring and affirming it is to see the number of engaged and involved staff members that are participating at 3:45 at the very end of their day for a good hour. So I'll continue to update as information comes out of that training to share, but very interactive and positive work. And, and again, of course, I'll give them further up, a report on the board committee at our next board meeting.
Thank you, Anita. Any questions for Ms. Williams Galliano? I too would like to echo what you said, Anita. It's, it's really heartening to see all the staff members that are involved in those SCL, in that seminar, that, that course that we're taking, and the commitment, you know, of everyone to really be involved in those important issues. Policy Committee.
Yes, can I have a motion to move the item on the agenda for first reading, please?
So moved.
Okay, great. Yeah, so we had a meeting last Friday, and actually, we did a more in-depth review of the policies and regulations.
Adam, we've lost your sound. Can you hear me? Oh, I think he's frozen.
So the one we have up for reading today is P-8420, which is the emergency in crisis situations. Again, the main change with this one is related to state change with regard to needing to make provision for training of substitutes in our emergency procedures and policies. That's the main change that's highlighted. Rosetta, I did have one question for you. One of the things we had discussed was in the second page, last sentence of the first main paragraph. We had talked about, it deals with if you have an unplanned activation of your emergency procedures, potentially using that as a substitute for a required school safety drill. I remember we had a discussion about the removal of the word "not" there, and that the go-back was to discuss with Ms. Hannah Smith whether it was appropriate to do that substitution, just because an emergency might not necessarily cover all the aspects of the drill. So, that was my only question.
We had taken the "not" out, I thought. Is it still in there?
No, if anything, I thought, we had thought it should go back in, and it's not in there. So.
Oh, you want it back in? Okay.
Yeah, that's what we discussed.
Yeah.
Is putting it back in.
Yeah.
Okay, so we need to put that back in for the third read?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so, you know, policy is recommending, the, the policy is presented on the agenda with the one modification in the, in that paragraph, that the statement should say, "Response is made necessary by the unplanned activation of emergency procedures, or by any other emergency shall not be substituted for a required school safety drill." And that was in there originally, yeah.
Yes, yes, that was what we discussed, absolutely.
Okay, so, so that's our recommendation. With that one modification, we're recommending approval of this provision.
And then we could do it for third reading.
No, this is just first. This one, we're just approving for first reading, and we'll bring it back for second with the modification.
Yeah, we'll bring it back for second.
Yep. Okay. Oh, it's the only first read. I thought he may be, so all, all in favor of, of accepting that one for first read?
Aye.
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 Any opposed or abstaining? Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone.
And we don't have any second reads? That was it?
Yep, that was it, because then we're going to, we're going to bring back the other, the other one related to sexual harassment, that, if anything, had more substantive changes, so we want to bring that back for a first read next time.
Yes, absolutely, okay. Thank you, Mr. Sewicki, we appreciate it. Board calendars, February and March. Do we have anything on the calendar for February still? No, we don't. Right. It's just March. It's just March at this point. And we will start with finance and facilities.
Wait, Deb, can I ask a question?
Yes.
So, we were talking earlier about moving the budget meeting, like the, I have that on my calendar for the 7th, but now it's going to be the 14th, is that correct?
Yes.
So our committee meetings will have to correspond to that new date, or no?
Well, it'll just give us a little more time to get those in, right?
Yeah, okay. Okay, I just want to make sure.
Yep, thank you. So finance and facilities, when would we like to get together?
I guess the week before that, 7. Yeah. Yeah, that's good. Works for me. Everyone? Adam?
So then Personnel will be on the 14th?
The 20, then we move the meeting to the 21st?
Is that the regular, or is that the session? The 21st is the regular meeting?
Yes, it would be the 21st.
So then the 21st, yes, yes. Correct. Community Relations.
We normally do it Thursday before the regular meeting. Do you want to just stick with that?
Well, that's Mark, that's St. Patrick's Day.
You want to do it at Wildflower?
Wildflowers. Bob's house. Okay, so are we going to go with the Thursday or not? 17, yes?
We do it early enough.
Three.
Okay.
What time was that?
17 at 3:00, 3:30?
So, yeah, I really need 3:15 or after.
Does 3:15 work for everyone?
That'd be great, thank you.
Going once, going twice. SCL Committee, Ms. Williams Galliano.
We're scheduled for the Thursday, so the 17th at 9:00 a.m.
Okay, thank you. March 17th, 9:00 a.m. Policy. Oh, did I skip it? Yeah, you did. Well, let's do policy right now. We'll go back to EdCom.
Rosetta, one, would you like to do it?
You think? No, your schedule's busy.
I think Friday at 8:00 work for everybody? Is that, was that good, Jackie, and?
Works for me.
Yep.
Which Friday, Adam?
11 or 18, Adam.
Would you mind the 11?
That works.
Okay.
What?
8:00 a.m., right?
8:00, 8:00 a.m. on the 11?
8:00 a.m. on the 11, awesome.
EdCom.
So if we do Thursday, the 17th, then it's, we can't start until 4:15. I don't mind doing it that way, it's just at 4:15. I guess. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you. Oh, that was good, all right. I'll request a motion to approve the March calendars as attached.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's what it says here, though, doesn't it? Yeah. Okay, so we will move into our second public comment session. Oh, I see what you're saying. Members of the public are invited to address the board. Is the clock okay? All right, it's good, it's good. Members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You are asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by the district administration. We ask that you sign in at the podium. Public comment is now open.
Writing as fast as I can. Okay, hi, I'm Mary Lou Ferrara. I live in Hopewell Borough. I didn't plan to comment tonight, but having just been subjected to hearing a full-grown adult compare wearing surgical-type masks to the illegal torture visited upon detainees at Guantanamo was just too much for me to sit without responding. One can only hope our speech and debate teachers educate our students better and tell them not to use such bogus argumentation and ridiculous hyperbole when they try to make a point. I think we all know that masks help and that everyone is tired of them. Both of those things can be true. I appreciate the careful way this board is evaluating how they should be used. As the grandmother of a four-year-old, now five-year-old, in Pre-K who just got vaccinated, I'm glad he is surrounded by people who wear masks. I would suggest that it might be useful for the board to consult a Hopewell resident who did work at OSHA and wrote the mask guidelines for surgical-type masks in work and classroom settings. I'm sure he'd be willing to give you some of his background and information if that'd be useful, but meanwhile, thank you for carefully reviewing the masks, and thank you for protecting the kids.
Thank you, Ms. Ferrara. Anyone else for public comment?
John Edwards, Pennington Harberton Road. I just wanted to briefly finish up. I showed you my charts, and frankly, I look at these, and I'm having trouble sleeping at night looking at this. And I simply want to know that if the board is not concerned, I would be grateful in hearing why this board is not concerned. This isn't just a pilot, this is the largest pilot ever proposed in Hopewell Township, a total of $400 million, with $250 million being taken from this school district. I have assembled in order to do this work from public documents. I have put together a spreadsheet, and I'd like to provide that spreadsheet and these two paragraphs to you for your consideration. I don't have multiple copies, but I'm happy to give it to you. Very much at issue here is what this board's response will be. You don't have an awful lot of authority or power to oppose this. These pilots pass without school boards getting involved, but I am confident that if this board does appear, members of this board make their presence known at the February 22nd meeting, that this at least can be delayed until the demographic study is being done. The township is aware of that demographic survey, but they are fully prepared to charge ahead and pass this without the findings of that survey. So that even if you're not, even if you don't buy in totally to what's happening here, you at least should wait and ask them to wait until that demographic survey is done. I was mayor in 2002, when indeed, we had a pilot. And so the township has looked at me straight in the eye and said, "Mr. Edwards, you are a hypocrite. You're opposing our pilot, but you had one. I'd like to talk to you briefly about that pilot in 2002. It was for seniors plus 55. It had no market rate homes. There were no children associated with it. We got double affordable housing credits. The two were just not comparable in any meaningful way. What is being proposed here at more than $400 million, with the money $250 million for this community, in the schools being stripped from it, this is as horrible a situation as I have seen in government in all of my years in Hopewell Township. And so I simply ask you, if you're not concerned, would you kindly explain to me why you're not concerned so that I can sleep at night? Thank you very much." To whom should I give these?
Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
As promised, I'm here to share the second part of my statement. The work of equity is not about leveling the playing field. That is equality, and history has shown us that that only gets us halfway there. Equity is about implementing supports and protections so that everyone on the field has the opportunity to do and be their best. Leveling the playing field looks like one policy after exposure, regardless of the level of protections you have in place. If you support that, you don't support the work of equity, because nothing about that is equitable, and the narrative needs to change. Supports and protections so everyone has the opportunity to do and be their best on that field looks like a plan that is determined by the level of protection you have in place. Even beyond the exposure policy, it looks like offering remote instruction for the immunocompromised. It looks like offering testing at district sites, because access to testing is difficult for many families. It looks like a little extra time outside, because some kiddos are experiencing anxiety during this time and need to get outside and play with friends. Again, it does not look like a blanket policy where we are not vigilantly fighting spread and that ultimately increases the risk of exposure and transmission, because that is what creates an equity issue. While we shed tears about a few days here and a few days there, or we get mad, or we get anxious, we need to be reminded of what is actually at stake here. Lives. Lives are at stake here. We have students in this district who've lost a parent to COVID. I need to repeat that because it's important to note, we have students in this district that lost a parent to COVID. Now, I've said what I came here to say, and I realize that my three minutes are not up. So I'm gonna be repeating some of what I said, because I want everyone in this room and everyone viewing online to take a moment and think about what actually matters. You want to talk about equity? Let's talk about the equity issue that is created when a child loses a parent. Let's talk about what we need to be doing as a community to hold those children gently, because that loss cannot be undone. And I'm certain that none of us wants to see it repeated. Thank you for your time, and thank you, thank you, thank you for your bravery, for your hard work, for your support of these kids and their families. We are so incredibly grateful for all of you.
Thank you, Ms. Hogan. Anyone else for public comment? And Mr. Edwards, thank you for your comments. We will, we will review, you know, the data you've given us and take it under consideration, for sure. We appreciate it, and Mrs. Edwards and others who have commented on the pilot situation. Public comment is now closed, and we will move into executive session. Like to request a motion that the board enter into executive session. We will be discussing matters of harassment, intimidating, intimidation and bullying, and a personnel matter. An action will be taken.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Motion carries.